If everybody's ready to begin, I'd like to call this meeting to order. The, in accordance with the state sunshine law of New Jersey, adequate notice of this meeting of the Board of Education of Hillsborough was provided on May 17th, 2012, to the Hillsborough Beacon and the Courier-News. May I have a roll call? Mr. Mahmoud.
Shirley. Ms. Bogachowski? Ms. Santafonte?
Here.
Mr. Gillette?
Here.
Mrs. Haas?
Here.
Mrs. Haley?
Here.
Mrs. Lay? Mr. Paulsifer?
Here.
Mrs. Soisan?
Here.
And Mr. Kint?
Can everybody rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
No flag.
And we have no flag. There's a flag over there.
Yep. That's the flag. On the wall. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would just like to acknowledge that today, by executive order of the Governor, flags throughout New Jersey have been flying at half-staff in honor of U.S. Navy Lieutenant Christopher Moscow, who was killed in Afghanistan. So, I'd just like to acknowledge his service. We move on to correspondence, and I note that there has been none. Please write to us. We're very friendly. We'd like to hear from you. And now, I'd like to move on to the superintendent's report. Dr. Schiff.
Thank you, Mrs. Haas. We have a lot of good news that I'd like to share with the Board as well as with the public. We were just informed last week that the New Jersey Department of Education has identified Hillsborough Township Public Schools as a high-performing district as part of our annual monitoring, actually every three years, our monitoring process entitled CUSAC. I'd like to turn it over to Dr. Antunes for some additional comment on that.
Thank you. CUSAC stands for Quality Single Accountability Continuum. It is a continuum of scores essentially over five areas. DPRs, District Performance Reviews. We receive them in Instruction and Program, Fiscal Management, Governance, Operations, and Personnel. Used to be that we used to get monitored every seven years. Three, four years ago, the rules changed, and now every school district in New Jersey gets monitored every three years. So, this was our year to be monitored again. Last year, we also received scores as high-performing. This year, while the process changed a little bit, essentially, we still, the state comes in, they check out our curriculum, they look at all the performance reviews, and we have to provide them with information to prove that what we say we're doing and what we say we have, we do indeed have. In Instruction and Program, our placement is at a 91 percent. Fiscal Management, Governance, Operations, and Personnel are at 100 percent. The reason why Instruction and Program is at 91 percent, there's a formula that the state uses in terms of state assessment data. They don't tell us what the formula is, they just tell us how many points we get for it, and no matter how many times we ask or the county office asks, they don't give it to us. And that's where the eight points, the eight points or nine points were removed from our score. However, everything else is 100 percent. Instruction and Program is 80 percent. And really, what makes your high-performing is, I'm sorry, Instruction Program is 91 percent, and what makes your high-performing is anything over 80 percent. It is a pretty long and drawn-out process. We start preparing for this pretty early on. Again, while the process was a little bit different, the state did a lot of work on the front side, took a look at our website, took a look at our curriculum, they audit our long-range facilities plan, our board minutes, our board notes. They do a lot of that on the front side, so by the time they get to us, they pretty much know what they're looking for and if they have any questions about anything specifically. And those are things they ask us. They specifically looked at this year, anything that wasn't on, the last monitoring, HIB was huge this year. A lot of things that had to do, any curriculum that had to be revised, that would be K-2 Mathematics, which we did K-12, and K-12 Science, which we are also in compliance with. So, anything that was new from three years ago is what they really concentrated on. And we sat around the table essentially and had a discussion about it. They asked us to bring up our curriculum, they asked what was different about it, and the supervisors, the administrators, all worked together to really show our best work. And we've received the letter, and here we are, happy that it's over, and we'll see what happens in the next three years. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Antunes. Moving on, we have some visitors with us tonight in chef coats, and we are happy to see you. I'm going to actually turn it over to Mr. Mahmoud to introduce our iron chefs.
Okay. Actually, Dr. Schiff, thank you. I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Major, Kathy Major, to introduce our iron chefs.
Good evening, everyone. How are you? Good? Look at these lovely ladies that joined us this evening, tonight with us. Well, let me tell you how this happened. These students worked with us a few months ago for the Superintendent's Gala, and they came to us and they had such a good time doing that, they wanted more. And whenever you have students that have a passion and a willingness to work, it's our obligation to find something for them to do. So, Christian Cortez, my operations manager, and these two amazing teachers, Kimberly Pabawi and Nancy Watkinson, all volunteered their time to put this event together. And we had, who's our chef over there? Mr. Ayman Mahmoud was one of our chefs. Yeah, Ayman did a great job. And we wrangled in one of our new board members and photographers, Deena, she was one of our judges for us. And this event went off. We raised $400 that are going back to seniors for scholarships, so that is going to go to two seniors graduating, and they'll be given at the award ceremony in June. Now, I want to introduce our girls over here. Let's see, we have a sophomore, Shaylin. Please stand up. Then juniors, Teresa, Betsy, and Christine. And we have two seniors, although it's unofficially Senior Cut Day, we still have two seniors with us today, so a special thanks to Christina and Jess for coming tonight. And again, Mr. Christian Cortez, Kim and Nancy, thank you so much for such a great event, and we would be remiss to not thank the administration and the Board for letting us do these things because we love to do this, we can't wait to do more, we actually in June are working with this class and doing sushi. And Deena's two boys have a whole list of us to do next year. Right, Deena?
So, they're ready. They had a great time. You guys were amazing.
Thank you. So, thank you all very, very much for all your help and support. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Major, also. It sounds like it was an absolutely wonderful event, and I look forward to participating next year, maybe being a judge. We have a lot of other great news to share with you, so let me move on. Congratulations to high school senior Trevor Nalepka, excuse me, for being recognized as New Jersey Governor's Award in Arts Education Event on May 10th. Trevor was recognized for being selected to participate in the All-State Opera Festival. The Governor's Awards in Arts Education Ceremony promotes awareness and appreciation of the arts and is a major collaborative effort of the arts, education, and state government. Let's give Trevor a big round of applause. Congratulations also goes out to the Hillsborough High School Student Winners of the Math Month Competition. These competitions include contest problems that, with over 7,000 entries, a button-design contest and an artwork, I'm sorry, an artwork contest on the usefulness of mathematics as expressed through the arts. As part of this celebration, the student body collects spare change totaling $840 that was matched by a local company. In a total contribution of $1,680 was made to St. Jude's Children's Research Hospital. Congratulations to all of our Hillsborough High School students who participated in this wonderful event. It's also my pleasure to share that I attended the Robo-Raiders Annual Banquet, where all of the students that participated in the Robo-Raiders extracurricular activity were recognized. Close to 100 students participate in this activity. Really remarkable, the Robo-Raiders are not only ranked regionally but also in the state and went to the nationals. So, we're very, very proud of our Robo-Raiders. I don't know if Betsy, who typically comes up and shares some of the things that are going on with the Robo-Raiders, is going to talk in a few minutes? She says no, so that's all right. We're just very proud of our Robo-Raiders. Let's give them a big round of applause. Also a wonderful event that I hope many of you saw was one of our presentations by the Hillsborough High School Theater Department and their presentation of Moon Over Buffalo. It was an absolutely wonderful play, the kids had a great time. Special thanks goes out to all of the students who participated, as well as BJ Solomon, our director. Congratulations to those who participated in Moon Over Buffalo. Next, Hillsborough High School Seniors Srihara Raghavnan and Simon Wang were chosen to receive $2,500 of scholarships from the National Merit Scholarship Corporation. Srihara and Simon were named semifinalists, representing less than 1 percent of the nation's high school seniors, and were then chosen from over 15,000 finalists in the National Merit Scholarship Program. Let's give them both a big round of applause. Now, moving on to some truly remarkable things that are happening in the area of athletics, the Hillsborough High School Girls' Varsity Lacrosse Team advanced to the NJSIAA semi-quarterfinals and is ranked 16th in the state. Players Christina Vandelli and Elise Malecki both scored milestone 100 goals this season. Congratulations to those girls and good luck to our girls lacrosse team. The Hillsborough High School Girls' Varsity Softball Team is ranked 11th in the state, and they played in the Somerset County Finals on Saturday night. Despite outstanding effort, the team suffered a loss, 2-0, to Warren Hills Regional. However, the team had a great season. Best of luck to the ladies as you move on to the state tournament. The fourth seeded Hillsborough High School Varsity Baseball Team beat Bridgewater 4-3 in the Somerset County Tournament of Champions. This is the fourth county title for the Raiders and the first since 2005. Congratulations to our boys. High school spring track pole vaulters, Marley Sabatino and Emily Shipley, broke their own combined school and state record with a combined height of 23 feet 6 inches at the Skyland Conference Relays. Marley came in first place at Skyland Conference with a height of 12 feet 6 inches. That is the fifth highest girls' pole vault in state history. Congratulations to both of you. And lastly, I would just like to share that US News &amp; World Report came out with their rankings of high schools, and our high school was ranked 45th out of close to 400 high schools in the state of New Jersey. That had been reported prior to. However, being ranked as one of the top 50 gives you a national ranking, and out of close to 22,000 high schools, Hillsborough High School is ranked within the top 10 percent of all high schools in the country. Congratulations. And that's my report.
We've got Newsweek, too.
We got Newsweek? Oh, that's correct.
In today's patch.
We did. I don't have the details of it. If you would like to announce it, please do.
Just Newsweek Magazine also announced that Hillsborough High School is in the top 1,000 of high schools nationwide, so that was just in today's patch, so details to follow. But again, another recognition for our high school and our district, so we're very proud Onward to the approval of minutes. We have three sets of minutes, which I hope everybody reviewed. May 7th, special public meeting. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Christine.
Moving on to the May 7th Executive Session Minutes. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions?
Christine.
Okay. And the May 7th Regular Public Meeting Minutes. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Chris. And second, Deena?
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All abstentions? Guess who?
No, I'm good.
Oh, you are? That's right, you're on time. Okay. We move on to committee reports. Chris, would you like to start with the Human Resources Committee?
Certainly. We began our meeting with a norming activity where we, as a committee, since we have a new committee group post-election, go over the rules we want to go by. So, we established our rules of procedure for the committee and how we will proceed this year. We followed that with a strategic plan update from Mr. Rocco regarding the human resources goals in the strategic plan, reviewed the observation tools for certified and district administration. There are several committees that have been formed within that group and have been meeting for a couple of months, and then the entire committee will be reconvening to make final recommendations later in this year. The second goal that we reviewed was the new media center. Again, that committee has been broken up into subcommittees to look at media centers at the different age group levels, intermediate school, the middle school, and the high school. This committee also made some site visits to Montclair Kimberly Academy, Hunter and Central Regional High School, and to Rutgers to view media centers already in operation. And lastly, we reviewed, for strategic plan, we reviewed the three-year professional development programs. Surveys have been sent out, and that data will be gathered, both for professional and non-professional staff, to review what the desired programs would be to further the education of those members. Results of that survey will lead to an analysis of what programs to offer. We followed that with a review of our action report, where the committee went over all the items that we worked on in the past school year, just to recap all the issues we had dealt with, and also kind of lay the groundwork for what we'll be doing this year. And lastly, we discussed some things, which actually I mentioned at the last meeting because it was going to be on the action agenda, but just to give a quick highlight, instructional assistance at Woods Road School for increased enrollment, renewals of non-tenured teachers and classroom assistants, job descriptions, and coaching realignment. Those were all items that were voted on on the action agenda at our last meeting, and that's all.
Thank you very much, Chris. Mr. Gillette, would you like to give the report for the Operations Committee?
Yes, thank you, Mrs. Haas. The Operations Committee met on May 9th, and we also had the norming activity, but we spent the bulk of the time on the strategic plan update. We have a number of goals that have been ongoing this past year. We took, Mr. Mahmoud led us through the goals, and there are some that are completed, some ongoing, and one that we actually are dropping. So, the first one was to establish the automated budget process utilizing Systems 3000. That's been completed for a while. Ongoing is creating and monitoring and administering revenue-generating initiatives. This will be an ongoing, this will never end, I don't think. This is an ongoing goal with periodic updates from the administration. We are, the third goal was to develop a comprehensive capital and maintenance plan priorities list. This list was completed in February 2012 as we were in the middle of the budget process, and we expect this will be a yearly, annual goal. The fourth goal was to continue to explore and implement green initiatives. This is ongoing. And the goal that we are actually dropping is to collaborate with home and school associations on beautification projects. It was the recommendation of administration that the individual schools are working independently on beautification projects, they have their own resources available, and this goal did not rise to something that needed full district-wide board involvement. So, it's going to happen, but not through this goal process. And finally, Dr. Schiff reported on interest by a developer in Hillsborough Elementary School property. This was an anonymous interest by an anonymous developer who contacted someone at the, who works for the township, and said they would like to, interested in knowing if we'd like to do something with that property, but when Dr. Schiff attempted to set up a meeting, there was no meeting, developer was never heard from again. So, this is something that occasionally comes up maybe once a year, that someone says, "Oh, what are you doing with that property? Are you planning on selling that property?" And there seems to be, from my point of view, there seemed to be some confusion about what that process would entail if we ever did decide to do something else with that property or, so the committee suggested to administration that we develop some guidelines, like a fact sheet of how, of the particular rules and procedures involved in something like this that maybe the township could have, the township business advocate or whoever would be the proper person could have this fact sheet, so we wouldn't have to go through this process of nobody understanding how this works. So, I think administration is going to come up with some simple guidelines that will be available, and also for the public maybe to understand, too, that there's no, you know, dealing with developers, that's not how it works. Okay? And that was our meeting. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Gillette. I guess in the absence of everybody else from the Education Committee, I'll give the Education Report. We also had a norming activity to begin our meeting that was led by Dr. Antunes in the style that she must have taught classes when she began her career. We enjoyed that very much. And we had an update, a partial update on the strategic plan, our goals in the Education Committee. The first one being the collection, analyzing, interpreting, reporting, and utilizing student achievement information. So, we're working very hard on that. We have made a lot of progress on that, but we're still researching the ability to procure a data warehousing solution, and more information about that will be shared in the future. In relation to all of the goals for integrating technology into instructional practice, we shared that most of the items in that goal were complete, and some of them were completed ahead of schedule. We, as everybody knows, have set up various pilot programs and various initiatives in that area, and those are moving along. Our goals three and four, due to time constraints, had to be discussed at the next meeting of the committee. We also looked at our accomplishments for the previous year. We approved a book that is on our education agenda tonight for approval. This book is going to be a common read for all of the grades in the high school, and it's called "The Day the World Came to Town: 9/11 in Gander, Newfoundland," by Jim DeFed. Basically, the concept of this was to give everybody in the high school a book to read over the summer that everybody can discuss together. And the nice thing about it is, when school begins again and 9/11 comes around, that will be the day where this book is discussed building-wide. So, I think that's a very nice initiative. We also discussed, as much as we could, a new memorandum from Christopher Surf, Acting Commissioner of the Department of Education, about how various schools were placed into categories of reward priority and focus status. We are happy not to be a focus or priority school, but we're not exactly clear on why we're not a reward school. And unfortunately, the formula that was used to determine which schools are which has not been made public by the Department of Education, so we're sort of pursuing that. And that was it for the Education Committee. I'll take any questions or comments from the Board. Thank you, Ms. Education President, Chair, for arriving. But be that all as it may, does anybody have any questions on committee reports? Okay. Any comments from the public on committee reports? Okay, moving right along. We have new business. Are there any members of the public who'd like to bring up any items of new business for the Board's attention? Please step up to the microphone and give your name.
Good evening, members of the School Board and Dr. Schiff. My name is Marissa Sladek, and I live at 681 Dover Court, Unit E. I would like to talk to you tonight about my children, Matthew, and my children, Matthew and Christopher. Matthew, as you can see here, somewhat, he's a very handsome six-year-old little boy. He has big puppy-dog brown eyes, and he's a very, very kind, loving little boy. He takes pride in the fact that he's a twin. He was not eager to start kindergarten this fall, but I assured him he would have a wonderful school year. And on September 6th, we eagerly awaited for the bus. I remember how nervous he was. I joked with him about it because he had a cast on his arm, and I told him that chicks dig kids with injuries, so he thought he was going to be the big boy that would get a girlfriend right away kind of thing. Unfortunately, what I remember most is not how eager he was to get on the bus, but the fact that he had to crawl onto the bus to access the bus. I asked the bus driver if I could get on the bus, and her response was, "I'm sorry, you can't even go near the steps." My child had to crawl to access the bus. My child had to ask somebody to buckle him in because he has fine motor delays, and he also needed help because he had the cast on. What I haven't told you yet is that Matthew has a child with motor delays, he's a child with speech delays, he's a child with stamina issues, balance issues, and a child with autism. Matthew needs the aid on the bus in order to function. Matthew has had a bus aide for two years, and he really, really needs that, as I said, to function. Not only does he adore her, but we do as well. Matthew has had so much help from his bus aide, not only accessing the bus to get on and off, but dealing with some issues he's had with some bullying and some different things. She's a necessary part to his day. Now, let me talk to you about my four-year-old. My four-year-old's name is Christopher. Christopher's a fun-loving, mischievous, four-year-old little boy who attends Miss Carroll's autism class at Woods Road Elementary. He has a 16P 11.2 duplication, which causes motor delays, speech delays, stamina issues, behavior issues, and autism. Christopher, because of his autism, doesn't do well with breaks. He has an issue, like some of you guys do, trying to get up in the morning when there's a break in his routine. We had to ask for a harness to ensure his safety, but that doesn't always do the trick. Sometimes, he does what we refer to as a Houdini. He gets out of his five-point harness, and he tries to walk up and down the aisle. Not only is that a safety issue for him, but that is a safety issue for the other children that are on his bus. Now, I would like to bring up New Jersey Administrative Code. Transportation, according to New Jersey Administrative Code for Special Education, shall be provided in accordance with New Jersey Administrative Code 6A27-5, which reads, "Transportation shall be provided in accordance to the New Jersey Administrative Code in a specific subchapter which states, 'Students with special needs shall be provided with transportation in accordance to the New Jersey State Administration Code and accordance to their individualized IEP.'" The District Board of Education shall provide transportation as required in the IEP. Set services may include, but are not limited to, special transportation equipment, transportation aids, and special arrangements for other assistants to and from school. Because it's your responsibility to provide transportation for my children to receive their free and appropriate education, I'm asking you, what steps are you going to have in place for Matthew's ability to get on and off the bus if his aide is removed? What steps will you put in place to make sure Christopher doesn't climb out of his harness if his bus aide is removed? Thank you.
Thank you for bringing this to our attention, Mrs. Sladek. Have you spoken with anybody in the district in regard to this matter?
The only person who I have spoke to was his bus aide, who was quite frantic, Matthews, about the fact that she will be removed, as he is very much in need of her for every single day.
Okay. Thank you again for bringing this to our attention, and we'll look into this further and... further and get back to you hopefully by the end of this week.
All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mrs. Haas, Dr. Schiff, and members of the board. My name is Diane Dieterman. I am addressing you tonight in regard to some upsetting news that I had recently became aware of. The news that special education transportation will be outsourced beginning with the Extended School Year Summer Program beginning in June, or July, actually. Both of my sons attend the center school due to their special needs. If this policy comes to fruition, my sons, as well as eight other students going to three different out-of-district programs, will have a very familiar, structured beginning of their school day, very much disrupted. For the last three years, two wonderful, competent, caring district employees have brought my older son to and from school each and every day. These women are their driver, Christine Silverman, and their bus aide, Lisa Bennett. I consider my family blessed to have my children in such capable hands. Ms. Chrissy and Ms. Lisa have created a mini community on their bus. They have never forgotten any of their students' birthdays or special occasions. My boys are happy and willing to get on their bus every morning to see their bus moms and their peers happily waiting for them. They are greeted each and every morning with a big smile and a big hello. The students are told what is expected of them. They are provided with structure and discipline while they were on the bus. Chrissy and Lisa are an indispensable team. Our relationship is such that we communicate via personal cell phones. I feel that my children are being taken to school by two good friends. I have never questioned my children's safety or whether or not they are well taken care of. Please understand that my children are on the bus to and from school an hour and a half apiece. They are on the bus for three hours each and every day, school day. I have never, oh, excuse me, I trust them implicitly. Ms. Chrissy's safety record can only be matched by her attendance record. She has never been late without a phone call. She is rarely absent. The bus has never been in an accident while my son has been on it. I have a sense of peace, knowing that my children are in such capable hands. I am sure there are other families in the district that have similar experiences with their special ed transportation staff. I ask the board members to please not accept this perfectly balanced apple cart. Please find a way to keep the status quo in special education transportation. Please keep the center school out-of-district transportation situation the same for extended school year this summer and for the upcoming school year. I thank you for your kind attention.
Thank you very much for bringing this to our attention. Dr. Schiff has some comments about that?
Thank you for your comments. I appreciate both, both parents coming up to the podium this evening. I would like to clarify a couple of issues, and I'm going to ask for the assistance of Mr. Mahmud and Mr. Rocco in just a moment. We have a couple of retirements that are happening in our, with our own bus drivers this year. Those particular routes are going to be picked up by the ESC, and there has been a question about whether or not the aides that would have been part of that route would continue to be part of that route. This concern was brought to my attention actually this morning from the President of the HEA, and we're going to take a look at it. So what I, what I can promise both of you is that under no condition would your IEP not be fully implemented as required by law. What, what we will do is we'll take a look to see whether or not ESC will accept our instructional aides on their route or not. Mr. Mahmud?
Dr. Schiff, we, we did get an update late this afternoon that the ESC will accept our aides on their bus.
Very good. Are you thinking that it's going to be the same aides on the out-districted buses, or just, we don't, do we have a guarantee that there will be the same people?
Mr. Rocco?
I met with the aides on Friday afternoon to talk about the situation and inform them that I wasn't aware if ESC would or would not allow our aides on the bus, but we would find out, and Mr. Mahmud did that. I can tell you that scheduling at this point is very preliminary, and I couldn't say one way or the other until all the routes are finished up. And as a parent, you know, there are reevaluations that are being done, and the IEPs are being rewritten, and, and other things are being put in. So as that happens, those routes will be provided to transportation, who will then assign the, the aides, as has been done in the past. So right now, there are only a few routes that are guaranteed that we know as of this point, and those aides have been issued contracts. As the year goes on, and as special services provides us that information, more aides will be put on based on what the IEP said.
I, I do not think that Lisa Bennett was possibly in that mix. She has not informed me personally, so I'm not sure if that happened on our bus. So I would vote for Lisa Bennett to be on the center school bus if we could all arrange that. And I am, Dr. Schiff, I'm, I am totally not, did not, not saying that their, my, our IEPs are not being met. It's just that this is such a wonderful little situation with, with Chrissy and Lisa, and there's ten, there's ten special needs boys on the bus going to three different programs. And there's one girl, excuse me, we have one girl now. And it's just such a nice little situation, and it's been going on for so long, and it's just really a very pleasant beginning to their day, and we're just trying really hard to keep that status quo.
We appreciate the kind words about our staff as well, and we also appreciate the importance of continuity. But making guarantees is not something that, that we're going to be able to do at the DAS.
I understand. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there any other new business from the public? Any new business from the board? Mr. Gillette?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna take this opportunity because you, you double dipped on us, so I'm gonna use it to comment on the two people that just, because you asked for new business for us for a minute. But I'm gonna comment really, just quickly on the bus situation. And every time this comes up, I feel compelled to say that the vast majority of our special needs students are, go on a bus that's a contracted, outside contract bus, vast majority, something like 90% of the special needs students. And the reason I bring that up is, including my son is one of them. I bring that up because I don't, I, I think we have many very excellent drivers in those companies that provide that service, and many parents such as myself are very pleased with the drivers from the outside companies. And I want to make sure that they get their, their due also, because we've got some great drivers from the outside companies, too. So I don't, I, I want to make sure that there's not, that no parent out there, the 90%, whose special needs child is on a contracted bus route, feel like they're being short-changed in any way if they happen to catch this on Channel 14, because they're absolutely not. We've got many excellent drivers and aides and on those buses also. That's all I want to say.
Thank you very much, Mr. Gillette. Anybody else? Ms. Haley?
Just to piggy, just to piggyback on what Mr. Gillette said with regards to Mrs. Sladek, and I'm, I'm sorry, the other member of the public's comments. I know, Mrs. Sladek, I, I thought that you had said this, your son experienced a very negative situation within the first couple of days in school. I can't implore the public enough to write to the Board of Education, because I anxiously always await to hear from the public when it comes to issues, because we can't be there all the time. So please, reach out to us.
If you'll allow me to respond, the second my child had crawled onto the bus, I picked up the phone, and thankfully Donna Landon was very quick about resolving it. We had an aide that afternoon. So I do want to commend the Special Education Department on doing that. However, as I said, his kindergarten experience should not have been having to crawl on the bus.
Thank you. Thank you. Ms. Lay?
Since this issue came up, I, I just wanted to understand, if, if this is a departure from previous years, what, what would be the difference of this year versus past years in terms of contracts with bus aides?
The only difference is, is that we have several bus drivers that are retiring, and we have buses that we will not be putting into service upon that retirement. Other than that, the question was asked, could we put those aides on the routes that are going to be provided by ESC? We didn't have that answer on Friday. Wasn't sure of the answer. We got that answer right before we came over today. So that's the only difference at this point.
All right. I'd just like to assure everybody that we'll take all of this information into account and do whatever it is that we can to assure a nice, continuous process for everybody in the district. Okay. Any other new business from the board? Any comments on the action agenda from the board? Any comments from, on the action agenda from the public? Okay, I guess we can roll. We'll start our action agenda with the education items. Would Ms. Lay like to make the motion?
So moved.
Do you want me to read it in?
It's fine.
She hasn't made the motion yet.
I did. She did. So moved.
So moved.
So moved. Very good. May I have a second? Thank you. Dr. Schiff?
Thank you, Mrs. Haas. I recommend the board's consideration of the following agenda items under the area of education. Approve professional travel-related expenses, curriculum writing, field trip destination approvals. I'm going to ask that the board hold A4 until after the executive session that comes immediately after this meeting, so the board can be briefed on, on the HIB information. To approve the textbook that was mentioned out of the Education Committee meeting. Approve the intent to apply for an Anti-Bullying Bill of Rights Act grant, and the submittal of that grant.
Yeah, I'd also like to just mention to the public that this application for grant funds are for funds for the current year, to reimburse us for monies that were spent on the anti-bullying program, correct, Mr. Mahmud? So hopefully we'll get that application in, and we will get some money out of them. Okay. We are now voting on items A1 through A7, with the exception of A4, which we'll do later. Roll. Any discussion? Board members? No discussion?
Did you talk about the, the book?
I sure did.
Oh, okay. Yeah. I, we highly recommend this book, and it just gives you a sense of, out of tragedy, you can see how good people are, and how they respond, and how we can overcome it. So I, it was, it was a great book. I hope there's a good discussion at the high school.
Don't give away too many details now. We want them to read it.
I'm not the, what is that, that notes?
Cliff Notes.
I'm not Cliff Notes.
Okay. Any other comments? Seeing none, may I have a roll call? Mr. Mahmud?
Ms. Santa Fante?
Yes.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Mrs. Haley?
Yes.
Mrs. Lay?
Yes.
Mr. Pulsifer?
Yes.
Mrs. Soisan?
Yes.
And Mr. Kinsizel?
You got it?
Yes.
Okay. Moving on to the Human Resources section of the agenda. Mr. Pulsifer, would you like to make a motion?
On behalf of the Human Resources Committee, I move that the board accept the Human Resources portion of the agenda, items B1 through B17, as listed, and hopefully explained soon by Dr. Schiff.
Okay. And is there a second?
Santa Fanta?
Do you know? Okay. Dr. Schiff?
Thank you. I ask for the board's consideration the following agenda items that I recommend to the board for consideration. The motion to approve resolutions for additional positions to be funded by the 2012-2013 Federal IDEA Grant, to approve the following retirements and resignations. Retirements, Maria Cannon, who has worked with us since 2001. The resignations as listed, rescinding summer enrichment appointment, and approve transfer and change in appointments as listed, contract change, leave of absence, and the appointments of various teachers and other staff members, the appointment of the career counselor, guidance counselor, lunch aid substitutes, extra period coverage, renewal of tenured contracts, renewal of tenure administrator and supervisor contracts, renewal of office personnel, renewal of clerical assistants, renewal of lunch aids, renewal of custodial maintenance staff, renewal of transportation staff, renewal of unaffiliated confidential personnel, and approval of school nurse for summer enrichment program.
Okay. Is there any discussion?
Well, I'll have to, should I tell which one I'd like to?
Ms. Lay? Yes?
Yeah. Could you, could we, B14, I would like to, well, abstain from, yeah. And for B15, which is the transportation staff, could someone explain how, why do these transportation staff have a contract now as opposed to the others? I just need to understand.
Mr. Rocco?
The drivers are approved. Those are the drivers that we're going to have. The staff that's approved right now, they are available midday. And that's predominantly one of the reasons why they were issued their minimum amount of hours contract. So availability was one of the primary reasons why. And, and can I clarify a little more? And as Child Study Team sends us information about what aides are needed at what time, staff that's available in the morning, then they'll be contracted. Staff that are available in the afternoon, then they'll be contracted.
Any other discussion? I actually would just like to make one point. I'm very excited to see in our teacher hires that we're actually hiring two Chinese elementary school teachers. So first time for this district, and it's, you know, part of our exciting new initiative to add that language to our offerings here. So it's exciting to see that we've got that all set for next year. Any other comments? I guess we can have a roll call then, for every item except for B14. So B1 through B17, except for B14. Roll.
Ms. Santa Fante?
Yes.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Mrs. Haley?
Yes.
Mrs. Lay?
Yes.
Mr. Pulsifer?
Yes.
Mrs. Soisan?
Yes.
And may I have a motion for, well, we had the motion, right? B14. We can have another roll call.
Ms. Santa Fante?
Yes.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Mrs. Haley?
Yes.
Mrs. Lay?
Abstain.
Mr. Pulsifer?
Yes.
And Ms. Soisan?
Yes.
Okay. We move on to the operations section of the agenda, and may I have a motion?
So moved.
Yay. Boy, you're fast. May I have a second, please?
Second.
Okay. And Dr. Schiff?
Thank you. I ask for the board's consideration on the following agenda items under the area of operations, to include, to accept the monthly financial reports, bills list, line item transfers, approve the Sterling High School Shared Service Agreement. I do want to clarify that, that that particular agreement is specific to our technology work that we're doing in the district. Approve the Agreement for Participation and Coordinated Transportation Services. The, approve the Resolution for Procurement of Goods Through State Contracting Purchases, and award the Contracts for Transportation Routes as listed.
Okay. Is there any discussion by the board? Anybody have any questions, comments? Okay, then I guess we can move ahead with our roll call on the operations agenda.
Ms. Santa Fante?
Yes.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Mrs. Haley?
Yes.
Mrs. Lay?
Yes.
Mr. Pulsifer?
Yes.
Mrs. Soisan?
Yes.
Okay. We are on a roll. We are up to old business. Does anybody have any old business from the board? Anybody from the public have any old business?
Hi, Jody Morrison, 23, Crowell Road. I just want to ask a question about the Sterling High School Shared Service Agreement. It was our understanding that it's only for technology. Is that, I'm not sure what exactly that is?
Sure. The Sterling High School Shared Service Agreement was the group that we worked with to put in the sound field systems, the, the digital projector units. For example, we're going to have one in this facility, which is a larger unit, so that we can project wirelessly in the same way that, that teachers from the classroom have that. There may be other technology-related services that, that may come up during the year. We, we do have a lot with the student one-to-one initiative, as well as a teacher tablet, which we may need to have some additional assistance on the tech side for. And, and they provided us with good services as we did all of the, all of the installations this past summer.
Okay, so it has nothing to do with any privatization, because it says curriculum services, plumbing, custodial construction?
Right. That's actually why I made that clarification as I read the agenda today. When I met with- When I met with Barbara Parker this morning, she asked the same question, had the same concern.
I didn't know you met with her.
Yep. So, no, there is no intent to privatize our curriculum services or anything else. That's a boilerplate service agreement, basically, that we signed. What we activated was the part that involves the technology.
Great. Thank you so much.
Okay.
Thank you, Jody. Is there any other business from the public or the board? Mrs. Lay?
I'm sure that Mrs. Haas gave everyone a good Education Committee report, but I just wanted to share what I thought was very good news about the strategic plan. When we talk about student growth, here are some things that we're moving ahead. For example, we're looking at how to have a student growth profile and see how, and reviewing the validity and testing, you know, the assessments within the year, so that the students don't fall behind without us being able to catch that. And we're also, did you say this already? Because I don't want to repeat.
Add your own comments. Feel free.
Okay.
I talked about it.
You did.
To the extent that it was in the minutes.
In the minutes. These were my own notes, so hopefully, just bear with me, because I think this is good news for the district. And we're also rank-ordering students with other I-school districts rather than using the proficiency. And so, in other words, we'll have a better chance of capturing student growth with all of these steps. And it does take time. It also, we also need to have a data warehouse of all the common assessments. So, it's a lot of collection of data in order for us to evaluate and capture student growth, but we're headed in that direction, so I'm pleased to report that.
Thank you very much. We had one other item that we wanted to discuss. Unfortunately, Tom Kins isn't here tonight because he's doing what all good parents should be doing, which is seeing the performance of his child. So, he had expected to be here before the meeting was over, but I guess he must have been delayed. So, I'd like to ask Dr. Schiff to speak about what we had talked about.
Sure. We, I believe we discussed at the dais about a month ago that we did have an application for a charter school to come into our community, and we received notification from the Commissioner's Office that they are accepting comments about the charter, either for or against. I have drafted a letter that I have shared with my colleagues who are also affected by the charter, basically talking about the value that we bring to the students of Hillsborough. And we need to get that into the Commissioner's Office no later than June 1st. So, I anticipate sending out a letter from at least myself, if not myself, and a few of my colleagues in a joint response to the charter. And I know that President, Mr. Kins and Ms. Haas have been in communication about a similar type of letter coming from the Board of Education here.
Yes. Is there any discussion about that? I mean, we didn't have the time to circulate a letter, but we're real close, and I was just wondering if there was anybody who had a general objection to participating in the comment, you know, the comment on this. I mean, unfortunately, the deadline is before our next board meeting. So, I would suggest that we then circulate the letter to everybody, get everybody's comments, and if it's all right with everybody, proceed. Would there be any objection?
No.
Okay. Great. The more support that we have for our school district, as opposed to new charter school, the better. So, I guess it's time to move into executive session.
It is.
So, whereas the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 of the laws of 1975, provides that the public body may exclude the public from that portion of a meeting, of which the public body discusses certain matters for which confidentiality is required as permitted in Section B of the Act, therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Education of the Township of Hillsborough, and the County of Somerset, and the State of New Jersey as follows. The following matters to be discussed are student disciplinary matters related to harassment, intimidation, and bullying, and negotiations with the Hillsborough Principals and Supervisors Association. The matters discussed in executive session shall be disclosed to the public when the need for confidentiality no longer exists. May I have a motion to go into executive session?
And we're going to, excuse me, out of what I know, but we're going to come back for the sole purpose of voting on just the HIB list?
Correct.
Right. That's correct, and we anticipate 45 minutes to an hour.
Okay. So moved. Thank you very much. May I have a second? Chris Pulsifer?
Thank you.
And we will now go into executive session. Thank you very much. How to do that.
Okay. We're coming back from closed session. Mr. Mahmood may have a roll call, please.
Surely. Ms. Santafante?
Here.
Here, sorry.
Okay. Mr. Gillette?
Here.
Mrs. Haas?
Here.
Mrs. Haley?
Here.
Mrs. Lay?
Here.
Mr. Pulsifer?
Here.
Mrs. Soisan?
Here.
And Mr. Kins?
Here.
I'd like to entertain a motion to approve from the action agenda item A4, motion to approve the harassment, intimidation, and bullying investigation list.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. So, I heard, okay. Mrs. Soisan for the motion, and Mrs. Lay for the second.
You got it. Okay. Gotcha. Mrs. Soisan?
By no means.
Roll call, vote. Mr. Mahmood?
Surely. Thanks, Mr. Kins.